I'd like to bring the regular meeting of the Township of Ocean Planning Board to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no degree of justice or wrong.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the Township Clerk on July 25, 2018. There are emergency exits and there are through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. We do have a no smoking policy. Also, no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. In addition, the applicant is limited to one hour of testimony. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's Community Cable Channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. We have several cases carried to January 28 of next year, 2019. First case carried would be Deal Development Corporation, Block 34, Lot 3.02. Address is 807 Deal Road in Ocean. Second carried case is Brielle Avenue LLC, Block 184, Lots 1 and 4. Address is 1304-1306 Brielle Avenue in Ocean. Next, we have a ordinance. Pardon me? Yes, Brielle Avenue? Okay, alright. Alright, I did not see that. Okay, then the new case, case number two, is also carried to January 28 of next year, 2019. It's called Leoni Properties LLC, Block 183, Lot 6, 3501 Sunset Avenue, Ocean. Zone I-1 is that?
Mr. Chairman, are all those cases contingent without further notice?
Yes. Okay, next we have the ordinance 2313, which I believe was presented from the Township Council and passed by them. We are adopting that? Is that correct, Sandy?
Correct.
May I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
We're going...
We're not adopting.
Correct, because the ordinance is actually adopted by the council.
Right.
We're recommending the adoption.
Okay, can we...
Approve to recommend the adoption? Second. I did. Yes.
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 Yes. And next we have a resolution memorialization. Kim Singh Incorporated, Block 33, Lot 29, 1647 Highway 35, Ocean. This is the preliminary and final site plan approval. May I have a motion, please?
I motion. Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, next we have the first case and only case on the list, Mr. Brodsky. Norwood Avenue Holdings, Block 13, Lot 17.01, 232 Norwood Avenue, Oakhurst, Zone C-1.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant, Norwood Avenue Holdings. We're here this evening, Mr. Chair, on, I guess, the continuation of this application. I wasn't here last time, my partner was, but I understand that the public hearing was closed at that time with respect to testimony that had been completed up to that point. Is that right? Okay. Okay, and I have with me tonight for just some brief testimony with regard to the traffic report that was prepared by Mr. Bulezza of Nelson Engineering and submitted dated back in March. Mr. Bulezza is here this evening to put some testimony on the record with regard to some highlights and clarifications of that report, number one. And number two, also, there were a couple of revisions that were agreed to be made at the conclusion of the last hearing. And Mr. Bulezza will walk the board through real quick those revisions. There were some rear doors that were added to the building accessing the parking lot directly. There was discussion about a bike rack, which is not on the revised plan, but we'll put on the record that indeed that's going to be put on yet another revised plan. So that is in place. And just some update with regard to DOT approval and a couple of highlights of the traffic report that has been submitted and that you have before you.
There's also a loading space on the new plan, which, because we had not recommended support of the variance for not having an on-site loading.
And one was added.
And one was added.
Correct. Okay. I'm sorry. Yes.
In March.
Yes, in March of 2018.
Do we have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I referenced it in my March letter, that there was a letter report from...
Yeah. If it hasn't been, I suppose we can...
Yeah, I believe it was sometime. It was probably in the packet some time ago, possibly, Rachel. But if not, I referenced it in my March letter. I believe the letter was dated March 21st.
Um... March 12. With... Yeah, March 12.
March 12.
Yeah. Okay. In the meantime, let's have... We have a copy here, Rachel, if you'd like.
March 12.
That's it. You got it? Mm-hmm. Okay, great. All right, now, John, you have not testified yet in this application, so I guess we need to have you sworn in.
Raise your right hand. You promise to tell the truth, the whole truth.
Yes, sir.
Okay, John, if you would, just real brief. You've testified here once or twice, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Want to put your background in benefit of your background experience?
Uh, yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Jersey, licensed planner, certified municipal engineer, director of engineering for Nelson Engineering Associates. I testify in front of boards on a regular basis, and I was the chief design engineer on these plans.
Well, he's accepted.
Thank you.
He's been here many times.
Thank you, Mr. Bulezza. And also, you prepared or was prepared under your direction the report we were just talking about dated March 12, 2018?
Yes.
Okay. If you would, John, just before we get to that, just if we can just whisk through those plan revisions that I mentioned in my opening remarks with that is the rear doors. If you can just point those out to the board.
Sir, can I ask you a favor? Can you back that up? Thank you. Thank you. Just pull it off.
Yeah, please describe on, for the record, what A-8 is.
A-8 is a color rendering of Sheet 5 of 9, which is the landscape plan. A-8 is a color rendering of Sheet 5 of 9 of the site plan's landscaping plan. Are you ready, Rick?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, at the last hearing, the architect has added four doors along the west side of the proposed building, one for each of the four first-floor units, so that people coming into the parking lot can go through those doors and vice versa coming out to the parking lot. Also, the board requested a bike rack. I believe we are going to put it near the center of the building where it refers to a sodded lawn. Those are not shown on this plan, but we will submit a revised plan showing all where the doors are off the architectural plans and will reflect them on the site plan.
And, John, the loading, the loadings on that?
Okay. So, we also added a loading zone, as you can see, which is adjacent to the west side of the building, the southwest corner. It is, I believe, fifteen by forty-five, or I believe twelve by forty-five feet.
Okay. Questions with regard to the site plan revision?
Yeah. I thought that the thing that everybody was concerned about was traffic hitting into the store, right? Isn't that the thing everybody was kind of concerned?
It is, but it's just, I think it was just...
Yeah, we're going right into, we're going right into that. I just wanted to make sure that there were no issues, no questions.
You're gonna talk to that at some point?
Yeah, right now.
Oh, great. I'm the setup man.
Thank you. All right, John. If you would, I referenced that we're going to discuss a couple of the traffic clarifications with regard to points discussed at the last meeting. And so, just walk the board through, you know, your findings with regard to the intersection, real brief, that was set forth in your report, just to capsulize it for the, for the board.
Yes, so, in my intersection analysis dated 3/12/2018, I'm gonna quote one paragraph out of that. Quote, "At the intersection of Jerome Avenue and Norwood Avenue, site distances are restricted for vehicles looking to the north along Norwood Avenue. The ASHTO intersection site distance requirement for eastbound Jerome Avenue would be 445 feet and to the south, 360 feet to the north. And approximately 260 feet of site distances provided to the north. That's looking left from Jerome Avenue as you're facing Norwood Avenue. Now, the available southbound site distance is also 260 feet, therefore, for vehicles traveling southbound on Norwood Avenue toward Jerome Avenue from the north. Now, stopping distance, stopping site distance, that is the minimum site distance that is available on a highway at any spot having sufficient length to enable the driver to stop a vehicle traveling at design speed safely without collision of and obstruction. So, stopping site distance, based upon ASHTO guidelines, reasonable design values for stopping site distance, now that's for cars coming south on Norwood approaching Jerome, having a three-and-a-half percent downgrade and a 35 mile an hour speed limit as it is posted, are in the range of 240 feet to 275 feet. Accordingly, the available site distance to southbound Norwood Avenue, drivers approaching Jerome Avenue intersection from the north, it is 260 feet and that falls within the range of 240 to 275 feet. Therefore, a driver of a vehicle approaching an intersection should have an unobstructed view of that intersection, and that would include any traffic control devices, and he would have sufficient lengths along the intersection, intersecting highway to permit the driver to anticipate and avoid any potential collisions at the intersection. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Have you physically been out to this location?
Probably hundreds of times.
Your observation of the average speed of people coming in the southbound of that hill and over the top?
Thirty-five?
That's a guess, or that's a fact?
That's probably for... I think that's, that would be the exception. I drive that on a regular basis, and it's anywhere from 40 to 45 miles per hour. That's, you know, I mean, I'm just, it's an observation that I see on a regular basis.
I understand.
Based on that, I believe that perhaps your numbers might skew.
Well, I think...
Obviously, obviously, I mean, if people would do 35 miles an hour, but, you know, what happens is you have people that are coming off over that bridge, and they come over the crest of that top, and then all of a sudden, they're hitting their gas to go down Norwood Avenue. I don't think anybody's doing 35.
Well, but I think when, and correct me if I'm wrong, the analysis is done based on the speed limit. And so, and still...
The reality and the analysis, do they coincide? And I don't think they do.
Well, but I think we, you also looked, John, at some history with regard to...
Yeah.
Accidents or lack thereof.
So, if you recall in my original report of March 12, we did an Oprah request to the Ocean Township Police Department for any vehicular accidents that had occurred at the Jerome Avenue, Norwood Avenue intersection in the prior four years. And the Oprah request is in the report, and there were none other than a deer and a car. There were no vehicular accidents there. So therefore, as I stated in my report, there's no crash trend at that intersection.
And, John, has, just remind us with regard to the status of the application that was made to the New Jersey Department of Transportation, and explain why the DOT has jurisdiction over this matter.
Well, Norwood Avenue is actually New Jersey State Highway Route 71, and therefore, in order to put the sidewalks along the frontage, we submitted a, what they call a highway occupancy permit application to the state. And they sent us a letter back that they find that prior to approving our permit, our plans must be revised as follows to add one note, the note being that the curb that's going to be constructed along Route 71 should be constructed from the face-form method and not the two-foot sawcut strip. And that was it. That's all the comments that the NG DOT had.
So the DOT has fully analyzed the application and has concluded that the occupancy permit will be issued once this note is placed on the plan?
Yes.
So they seem to be satisfied. Rick, can we, can we have this mark?
That's something that we've never seen.
Yeah, I'm gonna have that marked and submitted right now, and I have a bunch of copies.
But I, I'm a little curious. I want to just follow up on Steve's comment about our perception about the speed that's going on here. I don't know how to reckon, how to... You're, we're kind of just assuming that everybody's staying inside the 35 limit, and we're kind of blowing over that a little bit. So I'm not, I'm not sure how to, I'm not, I mean, Sandy, I'm not, I'm not sure how we're supposed to...
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to design based on conduct, illegal conduct. In other words, DOT, traffic engineer, the analysis is done based on, on the data that's out there. Now, if someone chooses to speed, that's, that's not, we can't design for speeding because people aren't supposed to be speeding. I mean, obviously, that's the, when people approach that intersection, you're gonna, you have to look and you have to see what's coming. And we were getting to John's testimony, which will talk about his professional opinion as to whether he can make safe movements into and out of Jerome. And also, DOT has said, you know, the design is approvable, it is acceptable, and DOT doesn't have a problem with it. So let me just, let me just mark this. What are we up to, A-9? And, John, if you could just describe for the record exactly what that is? And I have a bunch of copies we can submit.
This is a letter from Paul Demens, Supervising Engineer, Operations, NG DOT permits, stating that they are, have the intent of approving our site plans after placing a note on the plan about the construction of the curb.
Okay, and then, John, and then we'll get back. Just to finish, just to finish up, so DOT, you're gonna make that change, you're gonna put that note on, and DOT is gonna issue the permit. They are satisfied, right?
Correct.
So, so what's your opinion, you know, based on engineering design guidelines? What's your opinion with regard to the operation of the intersection?
Well, intersection site distances that exceed stopping site distances are desirable along the major road. The provision of stopping site distance at all locations on each highway or street, including intersection approaches, is fundamental to the intersection operation. Now, based upon the accepted engineering guidelines I've put out, my opinion that the intersection of Norwood and Jerome has adequate stopping site distance and will operate well within the parameters of traffic safety for the anticipated traffic volumes that will occur after the completion of this applicant's proposed site plan improvements and operation of this development for vehicles traveling at posted speed limits.
So you're saying, you're saying, you're taking into account that the new development will have a certain amount of additional traffic, right?
Well, yes.
A certain amount of additional business? And you're taking into account that that still allows for a proper amount of space to stop in...
Yes, sir. And Mr. Weinstein, I don't know if you had a chance to read the original report. So, based on the peak hour of operation after the facility is built and fully operating, at the peak hour, there will be approximately 40 vehicles exiting Jerome Avenue onto Norwood Avenue in the peak hour. All other hours are much lower than that. So, just to put it in layman terms so that everybody could understand, that's one vehicle entering the intersection approximately every minute and a half or equivalent to counting to 40 in an hour. So, that volume going on to the roadway is not a high volume for an intersection of this type.
And, John, all that data was submitted to the DOT, correct?
Yes.
As part of the permit application? And did DOT raise any issues with regard to your findings other than this requested note?
No.
So I have a couple of questions. Is there parking in front of the building on the street?
No.
So there's no parking lot. Would you be willing to...
We had to take that off.
Would you be willing to restrict left turn out of Jerome Avenue?
One way.
Are we allowed to?
I, I don't know. There's two things going on there. Jerome, the municipal council can do ordinances to restrict certain things with the recommendation of the board or professionals or whatever. The DOT is another whole thing, so it's not... They have control of the actual intersection, so, I mean, they may be willing to make an application to DOT to ask them to restrict the movement, no left turn or...
So I mean, I'm concerned you're coming across two lanes, coming over that rise with parking on, on the street. I know, I know that you removed parking, but I know down further there's parking on the street which I disagree with. And then I also, on the other side of Jerome, is there, I think there is parking on that...
On the east side of Jerome? That's, that's all residential over there.
No, I'm talking on the north, on the north side of...
Oh, on the north side, that's the McPho over there, yeah. There may be, they don't have a huge amount of traffic.
It's difficult to see, you know, a car's coming over that ridge and then coming down Norwood. You'd be making left in high-traffic hours.
Bill, why wouldn't we, so I agree with you that the township would be the one to pass an ordinance, but Jerome's Arctic Street.
Yeah, I, I just don't, typically, the DOT doesn't have jurisdiction just down the curb lines. They go back usually to the, as the curb radius turns around, often they go to the end of those. So they get into the intersection itself, you know? I don't know the answer. Not that the applicant wouldn't make an application to our council and the council restrict the turn. I think it would also have to go to DOT, it's their intersection.
Yeah, I mean, DOT has jurisdiction, and we, we can only, that's why we had to apply. That's why we can't have direct access onto 71.
I mean, they may have to find out. They may have to write a letter to DOT and find out.
But typically, if DOT, typically, if DOT identifies an issue or identifies a concern, you know, DOT could impose a condition, saying...
But that doesn't mean we can't, if they don't.
Well, not on their road. You can't.
With their, if the council so chooses to, then we could petition that and hold off the application.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. No, no. I understand that. No, but what I'm saying is that if DOT had, had, had identified it as an issue, as an issue, they could impose a condition.
Correct. Understood.
And they did not.
There's no reason a township council, as the owner of Jerome, can't petition or make an application.
Yeah, I don't know what they would do with it.
Let me follow up on that, and in order to do that in part, I'd like to refer to A-9 that you just handed out, Rick. So, is your position that, that this application has been approved?
It's our position that this letter constitutes what I call an intent to approve, subject to a condition. And, but I'll let, why don't I let our traffic engineer answer the question?
Yeah, I think he needs to.
Yes, this letter, when you say highway occupancy permit, they send you a letter back and they tell you everything you have to do and send back to them prior to their approval. So I call it an NJ DOT letter.
Technically, it says upon sending in revised plans, then it says they will further process your application. There's nothing in here that states that upon sending in the revised plans that you automatically receive it, right?
Well, if you refer to the next page, that's their fee schedule. They don't ever give you a fee schedule unless they give you a complete list of things you have to do. So, in other words, sometimes if we send in an application and it has a bunch of major things to do, they bill you on what they have to now review. They've given us their, I guess, invoice that the balance due is $130, which is their administrative approval fee for this application.
Sure. So that just says that you have that fee, and the follow-up letter, which is a weak letter, says you have to revise your plan, and then we will further process the application.
Right.
Period. I have a collateral question. So, the next of the three documents is signed by you, John, and it's to DOT.
Yes.
What's the sequence of these letters? Because, you know, the, the next letter is dated, you know, a couple days ago.
Yes. So, we sent in the highway occupancy permit to the DOT back in July. They sent us the intent of 2017. And they sent us the intent to approve letter on, in September, 2017. But they sent it to the applicant. I don't know if it was a PO box or something, didn't copy us. We never got the letter, so we never responded back to them. So, when we followed up with them, they said they hadn't received it, and it's been canceled. Resubmit. resubmit with the note, and they will process it. I spoke to Ron Roberts, the case manager on it. He did ask his higher-ups to reactivate it, but he said we need to send in a new fee and the plans with the note on it, and then he would expedite it for us. We haven't received it back yet.
Because on the face of it, you're sending in a whole set of plans, which on the face of it would have to be reviewed, the revised well after the September twenty-one letter that you're referring to. So especially since you're referring to revised plans, you have no letter from DOT that says that revised plans have been reviewed and they've been approved at all.
Wouldn't any approval, wouldn't any approval here be subject to DOT approval?
I'm just mentioning this because you are relying, assuming that you're relying quite a bit on the, seemed to be the statement that DOT has said that there's no problem. So I just want to clarify that DOT has made no substantive decision, and it, they may approve it or not, I don't know, but on the face of what we have here, there is no ruling, and they could say there's a problem. And also, in terms of the application, going to our, to our councilman's question about concern, we don't know what concerns have been presented or the scope of the review. I don't know if we would do that, I don't know if the scope of the review is the same as we would look at. I'd probably rely on you, Bill, you know more about than I do. So I don't know if a highway occupancy application is the, has the same scope of review or intensity of view as the scope of review on traffic that we would have here. Bill, you have any comments on that?
Well, I, I don't, the highway occupancy application, as I understood it, typically, you submitted that when you needed, when you were putting in a new roadway.
Right.
Okay, or improvements in a highway right-of-way. A major access approval is when you're putting in a driveway on a private property. This is really to more or less expand the use of an existing municipal roadway. Sounds like it goes toward highway occupancy, which is, I think, what John applied for. I don't know the scope of the review of one that exists like this, other than they, you know, I sort of have to agree with Sandy here. It doesn't say that they'll approve it flat out, it says, well, further process it. That was in September of two thousand seventeen. It also says that, as John pointed out, that if you don't get it back in time, basically, the file dies, if you will, and apparently, it did, so now it's being reactivated. But it doesn't mean that there can't be a comment upon the application by our council for the DOT to review as part of it, you know, can you limit left?
And also on top of that, going to our councilman's question, would they necessarily review whether or not there would be jurisdiction of DOT to say yes or no as to whether or not a left-hand turn out of our municipal road?
Whose jurisdiction would that be, Sandy, if not the DOT?
Okay, the problem is that.
To restrict on the, on the state highway.
Depends on where jurisdiction ends, okay? Let me give you an example. On a private street like, on a, on a public street like that, which has been there a million years, I don't know the answer. But I will tell you that at, say, Dill Road and thirty-five, on the west side, DOT jurisdiction goes all the way back to where the curb starts to turn into a left turn into Middlebrook Shopping Center, so that's well over a hundred feet, you know. And there, and you're not going to do anything in that hundred feet without their approval. Certainly, if township council wanted to say, do something at Dill Road, eastbound at thirty-five, they would make an application to DOT. So for example, coming out of Seaview Mall, the last iteration of some, well, Seaview Center now, the last iteration, Henry Ney was here, some of the board members may remember, okay? And what we asked is that the, the two lanes eastbound out of Seaview Mall, coming to Route thirty-five, just south of the, of the Jeep dealer, that they dedicate a right turn, I'm sorry, they have it right now, dedicated one lane right turn, southbound on thirty-five, the other dedicated left turn, northbound on thirty-five. We asked if they would remove the restriction on the right turns so that two lanes can turn, and they wouldn't do it. Because they have jurisdiction, so that's what I'm saying. We can make requests of DOT, but if it's affecting traffic movements onto their, or off of their highway, they're gonna assume the jurisdiction, is my guess. Doesn't mean they won't agree with you and do it.
Right.
But like, in that case, we wanted that removed and they wouldn't do it.
Yeah, that, yeah, I've been through that before, and.
Yes, sir.
Do you, you indicated, I lost my train of thought. The hours of operation or the, you mentioned the certain hours.
Peak hour.
Peak hours, exactly, sorry, thank you. What peak hours do you, what do you contemplate as far as peak hours?
I would think that it would be in the evening when the people were coming out of the restaurant.
Hours, I mean, do you have a?
Peak hour.
Six to eight, seven, nine, ten?
Maybe five-thirty to six-thirty, six to seven.
So that would basically coincide with our local restaurant?
No, it doesn't correspond with the peak street hour in this, in this, in this condition, I don't believe. I can check my data. Usually, the peak street hour is between like four-thirty and six.
And also, Stephen, on, with this particular restaurants, they're closed on Friday nights, and they're, and they're open, I think on Saturday, they don't open until after nine or something like that. Yeah.
That's occurring, I mean, if somebody else decides, I mean, after the fact, that could change.
Yes.
Also, that may be the case for the immediate proposed uses, but once you approve a use like this, you have to contemplate, unless you want to put a restriction on hours, you could have, you know, any valid use, you know, use that site. So I don't think you can rely on immediate proposed use, you know, tenants change all the time.
Right, because there, it's a permitted use. It's a permitted use and there could be other permitted uses.
Therefore, to say that nobody will be coming out of there on Saturday may be the case with the immediate application, but sometime down the road might not, and there would be no requirement unless there's a restriction, which would be unusual. There would be no restriction for the next tenant to come in there and use it whenever they, whatever way they would wish.
Rob, your, your intent was to put signage?
I think that was the doctor's question.
For eastbound Jerome Avenue traffic saying no left turn?
I, I think the doctor suggested that, and I certainly tend to agree with him.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion.
So coming out of Jerome, no left onto seventy-one.
No left onto northbound seventy-one, correct? So would you guys be willing to amend your application to DOT? It's a new application, to include that condition and see if they go with it or not?
Well, DOT restricting movements onto the state highway has a series of warrants. They have a process, they call them warrants, and you take a look at the street of higher classification, lower classification, what the average daily traffic is there, and then by a series of steps, you determine whether or not there is a warrant for a restricted left turn.
Okay, so we could, the answer to the question, Bill, is yes. Yeah, we, we'd be, the applicant is willing to further amend the DOT application to request that they impose a condition of no left turn onto seventy-one.
If I could say it slightly different.
We can't guarantee that they'll do that.
No one's saying that, we just said would you amend, because if it's their jurisdiction.
If they say okay, the applicant is okay.
So you would stipulate that there would be no left-hand turn unless DOC, unless DOT objects to it?
How is that different than what I just said? You're too smart for that.
One of the things that we would want to, if you're going to amend your application, we would ask that you showed the appropriate traffic control signage per the MUDTCD when you send your request to amend down at DOT, so if they don't.
Right, we'll make a good faith application.
Exactly.
We'll make a good faith application. We'll request a no-left turn restriction if they, and we'll live with whatever they say.
But whatever difference, if it doesn't get, if it doesn't, if it doesn't get stipulated that way, then we didn't solve that problem.
Aren't there highways that DOT controls? You haven't worked on it.
First of all, we don't even know. Yes, I know, but there's a stipulation that there won't go unless DOT says to the consent, and if we find out that DOT doesn't even care, then we need a stipulation.
John, does, does DOT, does the DOT have jurisdiction over restricting left turns onto their state highway?
Yes.
And what's your basis, John? Are you saying as, as a professional engineer, you know for sure that DOT has the exclusive jurisdiction to decide whether or not traffic going from that side street onto highway can only be governed by DOT?
Yes.
All right, so here's, here's the solution, I think, as Sandy and I were talking. So you'll stipulate to make an application to DOT to place traffic control signage.
Right.
If they come back and say they don't have jurisdiction, and the board wants that in there as part of your approval, then you'll put in the signage because it won't matter, because the town has jurisdiction.
Yes.
And, and the township can pass whatever ordinance it needs to do to control that. So unless the DOT flat-out says, we have jurisdiction and there will be no signage to that effect, there will be signage and restrictions.
If they say either we have no jurisdiction, then it's no left turn.
Right.
If they say, we have jurisdiction and we're okay with it, there'll be no left turn.
And if they say flat-out no, then.
Door number three, if they say. I forgot.
But I mean, that's what I wanted.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question going back to this, just for my own clarification. At the, the far western side of the property, where that driveway, there was a dirt road. Where does that dirt road go again?
There's houses back there.
So those, so those, there are residents back there?
Two houses. No, up top, on Jerome.
Yeah, yeah, so off of Jerome, go up, right, come down Jerome, you're going west, right? And then you come in, or drive, the driveway that you're just south of your pen, that right there, that's a driveway to residences? Right, so if, if, just, just if DOT were to restrict the left turn access, we're then changing the left turn access for those residences as well, yeah?
How do they get?
No, they don't have the access.
Yeah, they can't.
It would restrict it based on anyone using Jerome.
Yeah, but I mean, Ed's got a good point. If there's residents up on top of Jerome, on the, to the west of the MIFL, there, there's no houses up, yeah, to the left.
No.
Down, right, yeah, right past it, right there. There's, prior to, to, east of the railroad, west of the MIFL, there's nothing.
I don't know what to do with speeding, because I go to the Parkway.
Right, yeah, on Jerome. Right.
Yeah, no, I, I believe that's right, it's just parking, it's just parking.
But Ed brings up the other point, so the houses that you're referring to, John, how do they get, get access to their houses?
Oh, do they go out Roosevelt? Oh, so then it wouldn't be an issue. We got it, we got it, John, we got it.
Ed, you brought a good point up. Can I ask a follow-up question from the early part?
Well, that's okay, if they, they may take it off of Roosevelt, but I've driven there, up that gravel driveway and done the K-turn up to those houses, and they can go out to Jerome, but if they don't, there's also an access easement parallel to the railroad for those two houses, so.
So can we go back?
Sir.
Wait, can I, we still asking? So let's talk about the sidewalk or lack thereof. Did I understand there is not a sidewalk at this point?
Where, Rob?
On Norwood. On Norwood. Oh, there is going to be a sidewalk.
There's no parking.
There's no parking, there will be a curb and a sidewalk. It used to be the gas station, remember, and it was like wide open across.
How wide is that sidewalk, John?
I believe it's ten feet, I have it on the plan, let me grab the plan.
So is it, you don't even have to bother, my question is, is the curb line going to be consistent north and south of that location? It's going to be, it's going to follow the same curb line, okay?
Yeah, geometric alignment is going to match up and so are the grades in the curb reveal.
Got it, okay, one, one other question. So you mentioned, when you referred to your traffic study, that there was a three-and-a-half percent decline from north.
The top of the bridge down to Jerome.
Correct, coming from over the bridge, if you're at the red dot and you are traveling south, you are on a three-and-a-half percent downgrade. And just for your reference, a handicap barrier-free ramp, that's eight-point-three percent. So it's, this is not a steep grade.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just put as an anecdotal comment, I guarantee you that the DOT had a hand in the whole situation because this was probably an at-grade intersection when it was originally designed. And rather than have traffic on their state highway constantly stopping with trains, they put the bridge over at a later date, because I think, I believe there used to be a trolley from Asbury Alarm Restaurant right up the middle of Norwood Avenue, way back.
You're aging yourself.
I know, but I'm telling you. So they're part of the mix, so I'm sure they'll entertain reasonable suggestions. I mean, it may be, I, I don't know how you, short of measurements, prove that people routinely speed. Give you an example, the Parkway was not designed for eighty, eighty-five miles an hour. Yet if you drive between seven-thirty and eight-thirty on northbound Parkway from, if you do less than seventy-five miles an hour, you're going to get rear-ended. Okay, so.
I thought it was bumper to bumper.
It is, that whole platoon moves at about eighty miles an hour and you get caught up in it. But having said that, if that's the case, it's also possible to put traffic control devices upstream of the bridge, or striping, or both, to try to calm the traffic down if it's a noted practice that everybody, you know, that ninety percent of the drivers are speeding in that reach, in that run of the highways. There are things that can be done, short of removing the bridge.
But that would be within, within the DOT.
Again, the DOT, right.
Be petitions or the.
Yeah, exactly.
With regards to the DOT petition that's going to be amended, Rick?
Yes.
Are, are you suggesting that, that there be a request to put up additional signage, or is?
If the speeding is an issue, I, I, you know, I'm not there enough to, I'm kind of careful on Norwood Avenue, only because I live locally, I have one, there seems to be a propensity to sit there and catch people speeding, so.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, we can't, the record can only hear one person at a time and everybody has to be under oath. But do you want to see the amended application to DOT to confirm the amendment? So you can monitor it?
Well, sure, I mean, they should file it with the board, absolutely. File a copy with the board of your amendment. Yeah, it's fine, that works.
CC the board on the submission.
Right, well, let us look at it before you send it.
Subject to the approval.
You want to review it?
Yeah, it can't hurt, yeah, yeah.
And again, this is all, we don't even know if the board's going to approve this, but we're, we're talking about preliminary steps, we still have to hear from the public.
Yeah.
So especially for the purpose of the public, your attorney, the attorney for the board is making speculative comments, and, and we don't know what the board's going to decide, so that's what this immediate process is about. What else?
John, wait. Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I'm asking if you had any additional, was it?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. John, if, with regard to that front side sidewalk that's on Norwood, one of the questions, and, and the applicant has been speaking with some, some nearby residents, and one of the questions was, is there an ability to put any sort of, some sort of safety device or something in that sidewalk area? Like a planter or a bollard disguised as a planter, something like that? Recognizing, of course, that, again, I think that's, that's within the DOT's jurisdiction to put anything there, to the extent, is that sidewalk in the right-of-way or is it on the property?
It's in the right-of-way.
So that would require DOT approval as well. Is there something that, you know, and, and the applicant promised one of the residents that we would put on the record, that is there some, some idea that you have? that, is there some, some idea that you have that could somehow achieve that goal?
A bollard in the sidewalk?
Yeah.
I don't know, I think we should, usually DOT likes to keep the sidewalks clear for pedestrians and bicyclists. What, what would the bollard be protecting?
I guess the question was, in case some trap, some car came by and didn't, we didn't wanna, as we see on the news too, all too often, some car crashing through the window or something.
Driver going over 35 miles an hour that's a little younger that's not supposed to be doing it.
Or even going less than 35 and loses control.
But I mean, what, I, no, no, I mean, from what direction?
Well, I guess it would be from, coming southbound.
Southbound.
Coming from the north.
From the north and then...
Southbound on Norwood.
Right, and making a right-hand turn on.
Just going straight, no, no, just going straight and losing control was the question, essentially.
Well, if he was heading southbound on Norwood and he lost control, he wouldn't hit the building. He would just continue to go down Norwood Avenue.
No, he'd get, jump the sidewalk and hit the bicycles and pedestrians that are in front of him.
He's...
That was the concern.
That was the concern.
During the, during the summer hours, you have, you have a lot of kids.
You mean people coming down Norwood, not heading, heading south, but then making a right-hand turn onto Jerome?
Under any circumstance, John, if they, if, to, to just prevent a car from somehow ending up hitting the building, right? Jumping the curb, jumping the sidewalk, the 10-foot wide sidewalk, and then hitting the building under, for an accident, for swerving or what have you. Something to put in the front.
And hitting the corner.
Keep going.
Right there.
And a car, we don't want a car to hit the building there.
Or the sidewalk, or just the curb, or...
So they're, to your, yeah.
Excuse me, just to make a, a general point, this proceeding is being recorded, so we really can't have people from the audience comment. As I said before, when the gentleman was trying to say something, if you wanna say anything at all, please wait until you're recognized at the appropriate time, then you can come up and that's the way the recording can be cleared, thank you very much.
We, we could show some six-inch safety bollards at specific locations in front of the glass.
How much space is between the right-of-way and the building? What's the building setback?
Let me refer to the plan.
And I think that would have to be, you know, get the stamp of approval from the DOT as well.
Well, no, I think if it's out of the right-of-way.
If it's out of the right-of-way.
Five foot from the right-of-way line to the face of the building.
You have five feet to put something in.
Which is the front, it's at the front back setback.
So that, that would only, just so I'm clear, so...
I'm sorry.
Just so I'm clear, so...
You have a curb?
Right, no, I got that part, I'm sorry, Bill. So the pollard, the bollards would, i- if they're within the right-of-way, they're only protecting the building, they're not protecting the people on the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure, because I think we're...
Well, I mean, if they're, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I need a minute, i- if they're out of the right-of-way, they're not protecting people on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Correct.
So just to...
If they're in the right-of-way, I, I, I have to be honest, I don't see DOT going with that.
I thought that's what we talked about last meeting, was protecting the building.
It could be.
Because then we talked about, well, what other streets have bollards that will prohibit what's happening for this building to all the other buildings.
Different reasons.
Right.
Certain buildings in town now have protected bollards. For example, the bank on West Park Avenue, eastbound just past the drug handle, I forget which bank it is out there, I wanna say TD.
CVS.
They have a, the CVS with the community center and recreation area in it that has bollards to protect people from, you know, because people are, read the headlines and, and see crazy stuff happening and wanna protect their property or their building from whatever reason, so. But we don't have many on, on sidewalks in places, not, but I could understand on, on this applicant's site, putting bollards out of the DOT's jurisdiction once it's out of the right-of-way.
Yeah, so just for everybody's clarification, so the sidewalk is a total of 12 feet from the face of the curb to the building and the property line is five feet from the property line to the building. So that makes five, you know, you could have a seven-foot clear opening sidewalk and then you could put, you know, barriers within that five feet in the jurisdiction of the DOT.
So that works, so that works, that's on our side. Yeah, got it, got it. Phil, Phil, did you, would you, you have a preferred geometry on where these bollards could go?
Well, if the objective is to place, if we protect the building, the best place may be, say, two feet in front of the building or four feet in front of the building, but outside of the DOT right-of-way.
Right.
Like the crab shack.
In nature, so they kinda work with the...
I get it.
The, the building and, and substantial enough that if a car hits them, it'll stop the car.
Will that impact on the ability of pedestrians and bicyclists to have...
Well, of course, if, if you can't have maximum width, you're gonna put an obstacle in the middle of the width.
So Bill, if we were to want to protect the people on the sidewalk and put the bollards as close as you possibly could to the curb...
You're still gonna have at least five feet of sidewalk outside the bollards.
Seven feet.
Outside the bollards, towards the street.
Yep.
Center of the street.
Yes.
Yeah, in other words, the right-of-way, the, the, I don't really, John, I honestly don't see the DOT approving bollards alone behind the curb.
So the only way you could do it, the way I propose, is if you get DOT approval, that's what you're saying.
And if you want them to apply for DOT approval, there's no reason that you can't ask them to, they're going back to amend it anyway.
But we could do, we could do what we want on our property.
Yes.
Well, they, you, so you could apply for what the board's asking for.
We have that five-foot area.
And if you can't get it, then go back to your property, maybe that's the way, again, like the sign.
Just the same way you're doing with the sign, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that our, our focus here is to basically, we're not, I mean, we'd like to protect the building, but we would also, more, more importantly, protect any of the people, pedestrians on the side.
So I mean, you, you could, I mean, look, there's different ways you could do that. It doesn't have to be something, you know, really ugly. It, it could be structural steel four-by-four posts with structural steel beams that looks like a, a post and rail fence. I mean, there's, there's different things you could do that could be substantial, you know, and try it. I, I frankly don't see the DOT going for it within the right-of-way. They like things open to, these things aren't obstacles. Once it's in the right-of-way, they're responsible for it. If someone gets killed as a result of hitting that, they don't wanna hear that, you know, I think, so.
And there are obviously no tables and chairs out in front of the building. And the bike rack is going to be in the rear, correct?
That's what we talked about.
Yeah.
Can we, can we have a stipulation that there would be no bike rack in the front?
Yeah, I'm not, I would never put one in the front there.
So that's yes, Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
No tables?
And no tables, chairs or bike rack, basically nothing except the bollards we're talking about.
And the walk? What are you gonna do?
Sidewalk, yeah, sidewalk.
So where do you wanna push the bollards, the first blush? There's 12 feet of sidewalk, do you wanna hit it at five feet?
Out by the curb?
Or do you wanna put them like two feet off the building?
No, off the curb, that's close to the curb.
Close to the curb?
Yes.
Okay, so now you have a scenario where you have basically a 12-foot sidewalk, clear opening, and then you have a bollard, seven feet, six feet would be dead center, a bollard would be five feet, so now you have a line of bollards.
They, they want them right behind the curb.
Adjacent to the curb, John.
Oh, in the right-of-way, right, right by the curb?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna...
DOT's not gonna go for that.
Well, that's what they're saying, find out and if they don't, well, then you move them back out of the right-of-way.
Okay, so then if they don't go for that, then put them right on the property line?
Or right by, back by the building or on the property?
So then you'd have five-foot clear, uh, seven-foot clear, six-inch bollard and then four and a half feet between the edge of the bollard and the building? That's fallback position? Okay, we could do that.
Hey, Bill, I have a question for you, do any other businesses have bollards on this street here?
Not that I know of, I don't think so.
There's bollards like this at, whoa, what used to be Joe's Crab Shack in Eaton Town.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking, how's it gonna look on this street where this, just the section has bollards and, do other sections have it?
No, I'm not aware of any bollards either in Ocean or in Deal on the west side of Norwood.
Yeah, and my other question, my other question is, if I'm a pedestrian, we put bollards in the middle of the sidewalk and I'm walking up the sidewalk, am I going to naturally be forced, if I have a stroller or a bike or, to be on the outside towards the street? That sounds like it's making it less safe.
This could cause more problems for the pedestrians, try to, and do the exact opposite of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Let me ask you a different question, so, but what we're kicking around, so, so the applicant applies to the DOT to put the bollards right behind the curb line. If that's a no, how about like a structural planter, right along the face of the building, maybe two, two and a half feet wide with some plants, so that it doesn't obstruct the sidewalk, it kinda softens the front of the building a little bit and, and gives you some protection?
On the street or in?
Right against the front of the building.
Concerned about the pedestrians.
So they didn't have the rest of the sidewalk? Some of the board members are talking about protecting pedestrians.
No, I know that, but if the DOT doesn't let you, what are you gonna do?
I think what John's saying is that there's, there would be four and a half feet from the edge of the building out where the bollards would be and that's, that would protect the pedestrians if they walk in that width, is that fair to say, John?
Yeah, because they have 12 feet, so now they're gonna be walking down Norwood and they're gonna have a choice. Seven foot on one side or four and a half feet right next to the store on the other, that's gonna be their choice. I would say most people are gonna walk in the seven-foot section.
The question I have is that you're, I look at this, I look at this picture that you show and it's all glass. So why can't there be a...
Three and a half foot up?
Up wall. Wouldn't that resolve, wouldn't that resolve the issue and then, you know, and then that would change the perspective a bit?
Right.
I mean, I think, I think what I'm getting is that, you know, obviously if the car jumps the curb and goes towards that glass, it's going in that building.
Right.
What's gonna stop it?
Right, no, I don't disagree, so you would take the first, say, four, three and a half, four feet of building and make it structurally masonry.
Yes.
Doctor, why don't we have our architect step up to answer that question? And I think you were sworn already, right? So, I've gone up.
Just a reminder, Mr. Brodsky, we're, we're nearing the end of our time allotment.
I got it. I just wanted to answer the question.
Okay.
Fine, Anthony?
Rick, um, Bill and I were just talking about time, um, Bill, what's your suggestion?
Well, I wanna hear what the architect has to say so that we have some direction and maybe give the applicant some direction of what to get complete before coming back again, get it on file, so interested people can look at it, the board can look at it, get a sense of where we're going, maybe give us a, a look at how we're gonna amend the application, DOT, the whole package, so it's all out here on the table.
And before the board considers whether or not continuing or not, it's a little unusual, but could I have a raise a hand of people who are here tonight who would plan to ask questions of the testimony? All right, there's one person, or to give statements that would be contrary to some of the details of the application, so there's...
How do you know they're gonna be contrary?
They didn't, we asked how many were contrary.
Well, because if you were here last time, Rick, there were...
I know, but we've spoken, though we've spoken to a lot of the neighbors.
Well, all right, so I'll make it more generic if it's helpful. Anybody who would plan to make any statements in favor or against the application, that's, that's a fair point, Rick, so, there's three people. And I just mentioned that because obviously we're not gonna be able to finish the application tonight, Rick, because we will need to give the people opportunity, which could take some time. And looking at the comments from last time, I, I don't think they're gonna be extremely short comments, it's my humble opinion, so. No, no, but because we're at the stage where the applicant still has the gavel, yeah.
Right, and we just wanted to get an answer to the question with regard to the design, Anthony, if you, have you been previously sworn to remain under oath?
Yes.
Yes, good evening again, I think to answer the question about the building, you're right, aesthetically, we are showing a lot of glass. But what I was talking to my client and just based on everything, what everybody is talking about, just purely for the safety of the building, I think we can incorporate bollards, but in a way that it kind of integrates with the building and follows the, the style, so in other words, we can use bollards that are structural, but they could be, there's a sleeve that could be put over them and they could be brushed aluminum, they could be stainless steel, things of that nature, where we could provide safety to the building and not protrude out into the sidewalk area. That to me would be the least impact concerned about people walking and reducing that sidewalk width. My opinion would be to do the bollards, I think they follow the aesthetic of the building and also protect the building. If you do a planter, and I planter, my client's willing to do anything like that to, as far as the building, he's more worried about the people walking on the sidewalk, but on, on the building itself, I think the planners would come out too far and that's why I would go, be in favor of bollards and I could do a study to see what that looks like, as far as that's concerned.
You wanting to submit that plan between now?
Days before, remember?
Yes.
Okay, just one other comment, and I know I'm not the engineer, but just listening to everybody's problems and as an architect, we always try to think outside the box. Unfortunately, to the west of the building, where, sort of where the entrance is, I believe there's a sewer easement and that's prohibiting the building from being shifted, I believe that's the location of the building. One of the things that I, if, if, it would probably eliminate a couple of parking spaces, but if it's possible that there was a way to compromise with the easement and let's say, I don't know how many parking spaces, let's say two, maybe the building could be shifted back and try to get whatever...
The easement is there, there's no...
Is the building right against easement? What's the space between the building and easement?
Well, it's something that can be thought about.
And done.
Between now and, you know, 10 days beforehand, so that i- if you want to make any amendments, and I'm, I'm looking to the public now, so whatever changes are gonna be proposed, members of the public, they have to be on file, as Mr. Brodsky would affirm, 10 days, at least 10 days beforehand. So you can, you know, come down and take a look at those plans and, and see... Will you get them sent to us?
No.
We...
Well, then you have to ask the lawyer.
Yeah, okay, yeah, there's nothing that the board can do, but if they wanna voluntarily do that, that's fine. Just for the record, one of the members of the public who spoke last time is asking, and, and Mr. Brodsky...
Is that your question to answer?
You might wanna talk to them afterwards, okay?
Essentially, I mean, I mean, I would like to see what you're speaking about, like in a, in a drawing or some kind of rendition of, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard, when I look at this plan, to really picture, you know, what's going on in that sidewalk and, you know, how the building relates to the roadway and everything and the safety. And I think that's what we're talking about, we're just talking about safety here. You know, we're concerned about the public before we approve, you know, a nice project here.
Well, I recall last meeting, we talked about bollards in, in front of that, so at least that's on your mind now.
Absolutely.
Why, why wasn't that in the last, because we did talk about it last meeting, right?
Yeah.
I don't think anybody was demonstrative about including them on a revised plan, kind of thing.
Well, there was a couple other things too, like there was, we were, there was last week, or last meeting, I'm sorry, there was parking on the street and now that's gone, because remember we said if there was cars, they'd hit a car first before they came up onto it.
The problem is that you, you can't park within so many feet of intersections, so many feet of driveways, this has limited frontage, so.
Because other places you can park.
I don't know why there's no parking everywhere, I, I, that's the DOT thing, we, we can't restrict it or not, it's what DOT allows on their highway. it or not. It's what DOT allows on their highway. They don't want you within so many feet of the corner. Typically, it's 50. I know everyone does less, but so by the time you're there, you're halfway past the building. But that doesn't mean you can't park when they're up here. There's parking in front of the next site and the next site, you know, G and G and then the CVS Sephardic Center.
I remember the CVS when I was on the zoning yet.
Mr. Chairman?
Want to continue?
What's the, what's the opinion of the chair and the board about ending the hearing?
Upon the advice of one of my colleagues here, we're going to take some questions. So does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bliza specifically regarding his testimony? Come to the podium and the microphone and reintroduce yourself. I don't recall your name, ma'am.
Just for everybody in, in the audience, I don't know if everybody was here last time or not, but what we emphasize is that when you ask questions, they can only be questions. Later on, there will be the opportunity for statements. We don't put people under oath just for asking questions. We do later on put everybody under oath on their opinions or statements. Okay? Thank you.
And remember, these questions are confined only to Mr. Bliza's testimony. Thank you.
My name is Leah Harari. I live at 34 Pleasant Place. That's the corner of Norwood and Jerome Avenue on the other side of the street. My question is regarding this traffic study. Why was it only focused on the exact intersection of Jerome and Norwood and not continue the study to Norwood Avenue in front of this property? I did my own Oprah and I got a lot more data. So I'm just curious why it's limited to this specific, only this intersection because the cars leave the property and have to travel along Norwood Avenue. So there's, I'm curious about that. My other question is, was there any thought to contact the Deal Police Department? I did that. And to find if there's any data regarding their side of making that left turn and finding out what exactly happens there because I did that as well too.
So we've already agreed that we will request the, we've agreed to a no left turn.
Now, she's talking about a left turn from westbound on the Deal side, correct?
No, no, no.
From Jerome, from Jerome.
From Jerome.
Yeah, but Jerome goes on the Deal side. So which left, which left, there's two left turn movements. If you're heading eastbound from this site or westbound from Deal, which...
No, my point is yes. I'm, I'm trying, I'm validating that it's a very good idea, I think, with that left turn.
I'm only asking which left turn we're caring about because I'm, part of it's in Deal and part of it's in Ocean.
One on Jerome.
Right. So I would love for you to care about both sides, but I think that here we're going to be restricted to talking about the Ocean side.
Well, if someone makes a left out of Ocean onto northbound 71 Norwood and there's an accident with a northbound car on 71, that would be in Deal.
Right.
So is that what you have requested information on from Deal and think should be part of this?
Yes, I think it all should be part. I think it's all part of the same study. I do think it should be expanded to include as well Roosevelt Avenue, Norwood and Roosevelt.
I don't know why I would have to go to Roosevelt Avenue, I mean, I'll be honest.
Because if there are no more left turns, all these cars will be traveling on Norwood Avenue to Roosevelt. That's the only way to go. They're gonna have to make a right turn and the next street, cross street over is Roosevelt. So they'd be traveling to Norwood.
Right, but we don't, we can't have, we, I don't...
Roosevelt's a signal controlled intersection.
Yeah, that's it.
But that's the next left turn. Where would the people that want to make a left turn?
I couldn't tell you. Depends on what...
They would have to go to Roosevelt.
Well, they would go to Roosevelt to make a right or a left. You wouldn't know that. But that's, but that's a, a stoplight controlled intersection. I mean, it wouldn't be thought of as a dangerous intersection. Sight distances are not a tremendous issue. All the movements are controlled by a signal. I don't have a problem, I just don't want to drag this out. When are you gonna stop it if you go to Main Street and Asbury? You know what I'm saying? At some point, that, there's nothing about the Roosevelt Avenue intersection that's unsafe. It's flat, it's signal controlled.
There's a lot of congestion and that's, that's where a lot of these reports are.
Well, congestion and safety are two different things.
Accidents. There are many accidents there. I mean, but I have one on Jerome and Norwood, actually, on this intersection that we're talking about, on the Ocean Township side. That showed up on my Oprah. Few, few.
I, I think the answer is, it's up to the applicant what they want to study, but if you find that important, you're certainly free to get that information on your own and present it as part of your comments.
Okay.
So are you against the no left turn out of Jerome?
I am not against the no left turn. No.
So you're in favor of the...
Yes, I am in favor. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
First of all, I...
Microphone, sir.
Eli Gindy, I was sworn in last time. Do you need to swear me in again?
No.
48 Pleasant Place, Deal. Okay, so, so again, I'm here about safety and I think I was, I was happy to hear that all of you are very mindful of it and asked very good questions. What I'd like to do if possible is, is not question him at this time, but after I see revised plans and see exactly what they're gonna do, then question them. I, I don't think I want to waste everybody's time going through things that, that may not be an issue when they come up with the new plans. We've been talking with Mr. Greenstein and he seems to be very amenable to try his best to do whatever he can to protect, to protect people on the street and people in the building. So we need to see that that's going to happen. But I don't know that it would be real productive to start to cross-examine this expert at this point, but I wouldn't want to have it closed like last time. I want to be able to do it later if he, if he doesn't.
Rick, if I could address this, you'll stipulate to have John come back next time, right?
Yes.
Okay, that would resolve that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gindy.
Thank you.
What are we, if we're gonna talk about what they have to submit?
Yeah, if we could just get some, a little bit of direction so that we can figure out that the hearings don't go on. We thought, we thought we had made some progress.
I think you did. I think we talked about amending the DOT application, right?
Right.
To ask if left, left turn signage, no left turn signage can be placed on eastbound Jerome, adjacent to this property. And we also talked about putting ballards, starting with ballards right behind the curb line. I don't believe that went away. I believe that the alternative of ballards closer to the building or part of the building or both came as an alternate if the ballards out by the curb line don't work.
Well, I think, I think it was more that the architect was gonna come up with...
But we were talking about an architectural feature, right?
Well, call them what you want.
At the foot of the building.
Whatever you want. I mean, you understand where I'm going. You're gonna start with the ballards at the curb first if that doesn't work or do both.
Well, the architectural concept should come secondary to the ballers on the curb.
Right.
But if, if they shoot you down, then that's the alternative.
So we do need the architectural.
Those are minimum to come back, but certainly you should show the board the architectural alternative because I think there's agreement between the applicant's engineer and myself that chances are rather low that you're gonna get ballards approved right behind the curb line by the DOT. They would be theirs and there's a lot of reasons they don't want to probably hear that. But if they happen, fine. If they don't, I think you should get to see what the alternative is, should the public, if it's their interest.
I think you also said about the bike rack and the doors.
Bike rack, they testified, they would give us details, but they would be, that would be in the back of the building.
And the doors.
And the doors.
Right, doors are on there, we add the bike rack.
Architectural plans with the doors on them, if they're not on file, should be.
Yeah, there, there's also a whole set of stipulations that we made clear tonight. Those aren't required in terms of a follow-up per se because they're part of the record.
That pretty much cover everybody's?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you, you know, you still don't want to have any alternatives that may be something you end up wanting to approve or look at and not have it in front of you next month.
Correct.
It seems like we're down to the same issues between the public interest and the, and the board interest.
But before we do that, before we do that, I just, the applicant just wanted to, to submit some brief testimony in a minute and a half here.
Up to the chair.
Okay.
Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes, proceed.
Did he testify last time?
No, I did not.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Could you identify yourself, please, sir?
Sure. Joseph Greenstein. I am the developer of this said project.
And your address?
The, I just, I believe is...
Your address, your...
My address is 983 Norwood Avenue.
232 Norwood is the...
Long Branch, Jersey. No, my personal address.
Okay.
I'm the owner of Slices. We've been there for close to 20 years. You know, we definitely, as we visioned to design this building and put it here, safety was always our number one concern. I believe this came, you know, this is our third meeting here. And like I said, I understand it's a very tedious step and safety is not something that we're looking to ever cut out. But like tonight, when we came again to address an issue, unfortunately, we only got to hear, you know, Mr. Joseph, I can't pronounce your last name, sorry.
Di Benedetto.
Dr. Di Benedetto.
Dr. Di Benedetto. We were only able to hear his questions, whereas, you know, we, we felt we had everything outlined to try and have some sort of resolution to know what we could do to move forward and approve such a project. Where, again, I think we have to come back again and address certain issues and we're, this is going on for two years with Mr. Kirk trying to get back and forth with my attorney and engineers and having a clear understanding of what exactly wants to be heard here in a small amount of time. The neighbors have been reaching out to me. Safety, of course, is a concern. If ballards need to be put, we should put ballards. If we need to change the way the glass looks now, I have no problem with making it out of something structurally that it wouldn't be a full-size glass. I mean, these are all things that we just don't understand as we keep investing and trying to understand, are we allowed to do this? We're not CVS. We're not 7-Eleven. We, and we need to know, is it something, can we get this approved? We were, when we took the property, we were in, you know, it's a conformed lot. We weren't looking to change anything. We didn't need a variance change. And we were told, hey, this is, you're approved for such an item. Where we're having a lot of resistance, we're understanding where, where do we stand? And, you know, me, I go back to my father, my parents, they don't quite understand. Obviously, of course, safety, these are all things that have to go on, but we still never got to a point of understanding, how do we all feel? Is this something that we're gonna approve or not approve?
Well, I think, I think, I think the last meeting we had was a very extensive meeting and we were kind of looking for you, I think, to come back and tell us how you were gonna address the major concerns we have, which was ongoing traffic and, and people walking on the, on the sidewalk. And when you came back, we frankly didn't feel like that was addressed. I mean, you know, we, we, so, so, you know, you're looking at us, we had the very, I mean, I mean, I was here, we had a very lengthy conversation, right? Ballards, this. We had people testifying about, you know, walking with carriages and how they're worried about crossing the street.
Correct.
So we were looking for you to say, we're solving the pedestrians issue this way. We're solving the people in the restaurant this way. That's what I think we were looking for.
And with all due respect, Mr. Greenstein, I, I agree with you, Mr. Weinstein. Here's, the comment regarding the safety was in my review of 11-2-17. That's over a year ago.
Correct.
This is the first that's being addressed.
Correct. I, I believe Mrs. Jennifer Crimco has a ongoing, I guess, an email that comes back from, you know, Ron Kirk of what needs to be addressed. You know, or we're gonna be having a meeting and please bring in, you know, blood stuff from Mels Engineering to understand what the traffic study is. That's what the purpose of, what I was on the intentions are, to bring a professional here to say, hey, in my, my professional opinion, which would be John's, I'm saying, I'm quoting him, he's saying, this is what it is. And this is, you know, this, this should meet ours, you know.
But that's his opinion and he stated it, but there's people that disagree with him and are, or, and/or are simply questioning to get a better understanding. But this is the first that John has been here and made that presentation.
Of course, yes. I understand that. But I'm saying a lot like we, when we just discussed, you know, do people go 35? They don't, but that's an enforcement issue. And I, you know...
Okay, okay, okay. But, but you're off.
Yeah.
But just like, wait, wait, one second. Two things. One is what I ask from your attorney, okay, is what we need to have for the board to make an informed decision. So to say, Ron Kirk, for two years, I haven't been employed here for two years. Okay, so I understand your frustration, but the board gets the information and then they are entitled and should be asking questions so they can make an informed decision. Okay, so...
And also to be clear, you, you mentioned this is the third time. This is actually the second time and this application was heard in October. So you had a fair amount of time to come back with responses and you're, you're hearing responses from the board at this time.
More importantly...
And I said I wasn't able to get here. I mean, my application was presented over two years ago.
It was filed with the town.
And I never was able to get to the, to get to this type of...
Because the comment about safety hadn't been addressed. And again, in November, it didn't get heard because John couldn't make that meeting to present the information he presented tonight. So...
But I want to say, I want to say, you know, what we're talking to, though, we're trying to figure out how to give you some, how to help it through, right? I mean, we're trying to...
Give you some guidance, some guidelines.
Not even guidance, we're saying, hey, help protect the citizens, protect the, protect the building and, you know, we're cool.
Right, of course.
I don't think there's any...
I think it was laid out quickly. I understand why, exactly, like my firm or, or if it's John, like I said, like you said, I think it was quite outlined what it is. I wanted them to hear where maybe it's easier for me to say to them broadly, why are we not prepared to say, hey, we did our job. This is what it is.
I mean, really, it's protect the citizens, protect the building. I mean, that's, and the people in the building, right? Isn't that what we're, we're just trying to figure it out, right?
I mean, at the end of the day, we have a permitted use.
Yes.
We, we can only do, the applicant only can, can do what it can do. There are restrictions here. We're on a state highway, right? We can't, we can't enforce the speeds, right? We, we can only, we can hire our professionals, we can do our analysis, we apply to DOT and take whatever measure then to...
Yeah, and I think that, I think we were all, when you said, you know, that, look, you couldn't do anything about the 35, we were like, all right, we get it.
Right.
Right? And try to do something about the left-hand turn, we got it.
Left turn restriction, we've got the ballards.
Ballards, right.
And me...
And if you decide that you want to do a different rendition of the building, so the building is, you know, yeah. Yeah, I thought Joe, I thought Joe came up with some really good ideas on that. So you got that.
You know, Rick, I just, you said you can't do anything with the building. I mean, the fact of the matter is that, and I'm not trying to...
Did I, if I said I can't do anything with the building, then I misspoke. The building is in our control.
Okay.
But not in our control, why wouldn't it be?
Well, the building is. I mean, you could have put it behind the easement. I'm not saying you have to, but there are different ways to address it.
Put the parking in front, you're saying?
You could. That would completely alleviate any of the safety issues. Maybe your client doesn't want to do that, but that was brought up last time and I just want to make clear what, what the options are. Yes, you do have a permitted use. You have the ability to use your property. There's no question about that. But what's been presented is not the only form of...
Well, if the board is of the opinion that the, the entire design should be scrapped, I would at least like the courtesy of being advised of that rather than having the attorney throw it out there and then we all leave and figure out.
I don't think that, I don't think that's the case.
No, and just to be clear, it was brought up last time, okay?
Okay. It was brought, it was brought up last time about moving the building and, yeah, discussing that. We, 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 we just said, we were just, you know, because we brought about the, the ballards, right? That was a big discussion last time. And, and really the testimony, I think, of the people who testified last time kind of moved us in that, that there was a fair amount of nervousness by, by people who walked there, right? Was that the... So we're just trying to figure out. I don't think, I really don't think that anything changed from last time to this time.
Apparently, it's not just a simple issue.
I, no, I don't, I don't think, I'm not saying it's a simple issue.
It's just being explored in some detail and we understand the frustration, but it, a lot of, there was a lot of time taken in between responses to things.
Okay, so we have a continuation date.
I mean, I personally, I would like to see some different renditions of how you're gonna structure the ballards in front of that building. I think that's really key. If you can show that on a plan, that will really make a difference. Because right now it's vague talk about what's going to occur and not occur. And, and I mean, that's where the question comes in, you know? And I don't know how else to say it. I mean, I don't really know.
John, can I ask you a quick question? How, what would you expect the time to turn around from the DOT on the application today? I'm holding you to it.
28th?
Okay. Rachel Windsor next.
28th, 28th. Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth.
Of January.
So, Rick, is that enough time to get your DOT approval or disapproval?
We'll try. Do our best.
I'll send the application and I'll, I'll send it in a few days, so we'll have the revised application. I'll sw- shoot it to Bill. He can look at it all, get it right over.
That should stop them from coming to the board, right? As long as they have the application submitted.
So that's for the left turn as well? Left turn and bollards. Do you want to amend?
And can I also ask the question, I think to Doc's point, nothing's going to prevent them from coming back if the DOT hasn't approved it, but may I suggest if it's not too much work to show it to us both ways? So if the DOT approves it, show us the bollards on the.
That's what I asked for before.
Correct. Show it. Well, I, well, that's a proposal, but I think what Doc's looking for is, I think we all are, is an illustration of how that would look.
But I said, they should bring in both sides so that everybody gets to see this or this, one of them is going to be in place.
So number one, bollards hitting the back of the curb?
Yes.
Number two, fallback position is?
You and the architect work it out.
Okay, so bollards, no, no bollard in the, in.
No, I'm not going to. A walkway. I see trouble with pedestrians and bicycles.
Okay, no problem.
So, Rick.
And then what is the hearing date?
Rick, you done with John?
And when do the plans have to be here?
You done with John now?
For tonight?
For tonight.
I think with a limited issue, I would recommend.
You have a question?
That's okay with you.
Well, before you start talking, you have to come up to the microphone. You have to introduce yourself, your place of residence, and you have to be sworn in.
My name is David Harari, 34 Pleasant Place, Deal. It's my first time here. I, oh.
You need to be sworn in?
You have to be sworn in.
No, no, I heard that. Okay, go ahead, proceed.
Question?
Yes. So, being that they're going back to the drawing board, wouldn't it solve a lot of problems that he said he could do anything with the property to set it back and put the parking in the front, which will go in, we took pictures of the neighbor, that's, is this G and G?
Mr. Harari, I hate to interrupt you, but this issue came up the last time around and then we did say that other than G and G and the old Acme Building where I used to play stick ball when I was a little kid. Okay, you go on down there and everything else is butted up against the curb all the way down to the to where the pub used to be.
Right, that is, sure.
So, you know, I mean, you can go down this road if you wish, but I don't know that people are going to be favored towards that, but that's up to you.
But this is questions for John, right?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, and also this is restricted to questions for John. So you're up here to give a statement, basically. But this is, now that he didn't testify about this, you can only speak to his, what he testified about. So if you'd like to come back and live with that at the end, he would be happy to listen to you. Thank you. Okay, Eli.
Has to be a question of the engineer.
A question to John.
No, no. No.
Thank you, sir. John, increase.
I mean, the question would be, is it possible to make this building safe? I'm not sure whether or not the board, because I don't know exactly what you, what you, you want me to form a question, I want a question. Okay, where, where the board said that if, I mean, the bollards on the sidewalk, great. With a, with a flower pot to make them look appealing, you know, great, okay? But, but to put them back, but as a fallback, to put them against the wall or to put them in the middle of the wall, it isn't, isn't something, I mean, I'd be back here probably opposing it and I don't even think that Jolly would, would propose that because he knows it's not going to protect the people on the street. So, so, the, so, so what do you think about that?
I, I think we need some demonstration that there's a real safety hazard here. I mean, we're spending hours now on, on a purported or presumed safety hazard. There's no demonstration that there's a safety hazard here.
Well, that, that would, that would be some of the questions that I was going to.
Well, that, but you're, but, but the engineer has testified that he feels it's safe. It, it's the people in the audience that have a perception that there's a safety issue here, but we need a little, maybe just, it's not easy to address a perception.
If I may?
Yeah.
I don't think he said it was safe. I think he said what was there. And he said, but I don't think he said it's safe. I don't think he would, he would say that it's safe and, and take that risk on himself.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with what you're saying. I, I think that what conforms in, on Norwood Avenue all the way down is that the properties are up against the sidewalk, correct?
Yes, but, but I, I agree with that and I think about that.
And is, is, is there cars crashing through all the buildings?
This is a unique property. This has cars coming off the bridge.
So if there's bollards, sir, if there's bollards in front of that property, they will stop the vehicle from going through the building. Is that what we're talking about? Yes?
Yes.
So there you go.
No, no, I, I, I agree with that, but I'm, but the board is saying that if you don't do that as a fallback position, put the bollards in the middle or next to the building, it doesn't solve, all I want to do is say now that it doesn't solve our concern.
We, we ruled out putting them in the, the middle of the sidewalk. That's no longer an option.
I'm just saying that if it was against the building, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't address, you know, the, the things that I brought up last week about the danger to the people on the street. That's all I'm saying now.
Right, but you also understand it's not, it's out of our control if the state doesn't allow us to do that. Our hands are tied. You understand that, right?
Right, yes, I do.
Okay.
And we did suggest it, sir.
It's a tough, no, I'm.
Eli, we, we suggested that the bollards be placed on the curb.
Yes, no, I know that.
Okay, the DOT owns that area and we're going to make a decision. So we've done the best we could with that at this point. So what else would you want us to do?
No, I'm not saying anything.
The attorney, he's going to go to the DOT, he's going to make a request.
Right, I'm not.
And if, if they will favorably, you're going to get what you want. But if they don't, we don't have anything to do with the DOT.
No, I understand. I'll, I'll address that depending on what they come back with. Okay. Because this is getting sort of, trying to make out a question wasn't, I really wanted to say that we wanted to work with, with them and I think that he will work with us. We can come up with a solution.
I mean, he's offered to do everything in his power and that offer is out there.
Yeah, and any.
There are some limitations.
Any help we can get from, from, from the township or from, from, you know, Mr. Goldstein or Mr. Greenstein, you know, we're, we're willing to look at.
It's, as I said earlier, it's just difficult when you don't understand what the safety issue is. You're saying that there's a bridge and they're coming fast. Mister, the bridge has a counterclockwise curve. Basic physics tells you if you're going too fast and you're going to lose control, you're going to go straight tangent to the curb, which is not toward the building, it's away from the building. So it's really, it's really difficult to come up with purported solutions when we really don't know the definite causes of the safety issue.
I think you came up with a, with a really good one by trying to slow the car down in some manner, coming down.
Beforehand.
That makes a big.
Or there's some sign, the upstream would be, would be. Well, then maybe the applicant should, should put in some signage, blind intersection, whatever, and see if DOT will go with that. We'll look at the application. All right.
Chairman, I.
That's all right, yeah.
Can you make a motion to adjourn? Second. Thank you.
You got to take care.
Thank you, Mr. Board.
Thank you.